Just want everybody to know we've got an announcement to make here to the fact that Mr. Landry is going to be 50 years old tomorrow. Congratulations. You have made it that far. Somebody left us a note here. I'm not going to tell you who did.
He's a babe with 50 years.
Fifty years, just a babe.
He's just a babe.
Just a babe. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. At this time, if you will, everybody stand for a moment of prayer. I want to ask Brother Green, if you will.
Goodbye, your heads. Please let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We ask that you be with us tonight and that this meeting be a productive one. Lord, we thank you for the countless public servants who work day in and day out behind the scenes to make this community a better one. We would be with them, guide them. Lord, we ask that you protect and be with our men and women who sacrifice their lives every day in public safety, law enforcement, and military. Lord, be with us every day as we go forth of your will to be done. This in your name we pray. Amen.
And while we're standing, please, little bell, if you will, greets in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see. All right. We do have a, on item number three, amendments to the agenda. We do have one amendment to the agenda we need to mention, item D, which is the Calhoun Water Agreement. It is something that we have been working on, but they have notified us and sent us a correct contract for the Calhoun Water Agreement. What I'd like to do is change that item, make it item D. If not part of the, part of the agenda, we need to make it part of the agenda as item D, and I'll tell you what it's about. So that being said, that's the only item I know that needs to be changed on the amendments to the agenda. May I have approval for that, please?
Second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorite, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. That will do it. And of course, we've got another one. On that one is item A, add or under action items, the text amendment under health and sanitation. Richard Osborne painting an advertisement. Okay. The, we also need to discuss that just for a second. That is amendment to the agenda that public health is needing us to do also. So if I may, I need to move in a second, put that down as item C, and the Calhoun Water Agreement as item D.
Second.
All right, move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorite, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Approval of agenda has been done. Now, at this time, we are going to turn it over to Ms. Becky Denny. She, and this is her part of the program that she's been recognizing the employees of Higgins County for their security service.
It is truly my honor to recognize our long-term employees, and we have some great ones. They get up and come in and work hard every day, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we're very grateful for that. And we have some good ones, a couple of 10-year certificates. We have KCLP Pittman. Casey's with 911 and has been with us since June the 12th, 2007. So, thank you.
Don't go far.
And next, we have Von Kelly with the Sheriff's Department.
I talked to Von this morning. He was on duty with the funeral arrangements that the Sheriff, Donnie Craig, has had with his father-in-law, and he said he might have to wind up working. So he was going to try to come this evening, but I see he didn't make it. But we'll have to take care of him next time.
Can we get some pictures at this time?
Sure. Back up.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
And that being said, I just want to bring in one more. The Donnie Craig, Sheriff Donnie Craig's father passed away here the other day, so he is tied up at the funeral home, of course. His wife's father, so he is passed away 75 years old. But anyway, all righty. That brings us down to employee recognition, and then brings us up to the financial report, item number six. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Fay Harper.
Okay. So the report this month is for the period ending June 30th, and that's six months of our fiscal year. So the expenditure budget should not exceed 50%. The, for general revenue, the total revenue collections through June 30th were $6,707,802, and that's 26.31% of the budgeted amount. For the expenditure budgets, under the general government functions, the expenditures are $1,550,619, and that's 43.91%. For the judicial court system, the total expenditures were $1,536,358, and that's For public safety, expenditures were $5,787,971, and that's 44.96%. For public works, the expenditures were $1,680,340, and that's 53.5%. That is slightly over with the road department. The cost of that bridge repair is quite a skew in their budget, and I have a request for a budget amendment to correct that tonight.
And part of that, majority of that money was from FEMA, I believe, with Johnny. Bridge repair, we got a grant from DOT for $125,000.
So we're going down to the health department, senior center and the MATS program, and those expenditures are $336,100, and that's 42.27%. For culture and recreation, the expenditures were $435,000, $433,498, and that's 48.71%. For housing and development, $255,572, and that's 41.59%. So the total expenditures so far this year through June 30th have been $11,604,57, and that's 45.49%. So it's about 4.5% under the budgeted levels. For the enterprise funds, the water department, their expenditure so far has been $1,57,203, and that's 49.31%. For the airport, $175,151, and that's 44.19%. The line item budget reports were distributed to the Department of Handsome and Active Officials on July 11th, and I have copies of those. Y'all need to see those.
When do you want to act upon the budget?
The budget amendment is included. It's, I inserted it in the book. It's on the part of the report. There are actually three revenue lines that need to be addressed, and it's basically to recognize revenue that we've received either from grants or from insurance reimbursements. The first one is for the fire department, and it's to increase their revenue budget to recognize revenue from a trauma grant of $7,061. And also increase their expenditure line for medical supplies in the same amount, $7,061. The, for the sheriff's department, they had grant revenue. It was a SORNA, S-O-R-N-A grant, and that's to update their fingerprinting system. It was $9,924, and then they had, we need to recognize revenue from an insurance reimbursement for young people in the amount of $3,715, and that will go to their capital outlay expenditure Revenue from the road department for reimbursement for storm damage to the building over there, $15,962, and the expenditure budget will be the road department repairs and maintenance line, an increase in the same amount, $15,962. The increase in expenditures for the bridge repairs, it's for that Highs Creek Bridge, and there was another bridge for...
It's on Peter Road.
Yes.
Wayne Wall.
Yeah, it's for budget those projects. It's $71,800 was the total overage on that budget, and that will decrease the contingency budget line from $419,000 to $340,000.
If you need a move in a second, go ahead and approve those revenues and expenditures. Need a move in a second. Do y'all have any questions with Fay in regard to that? Need a move in a second to approve that, please.
Sure.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorite, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That has been approved, Ms. Fay. That brings us down to item number eight, under old business bid packages. We have got, we've got some bid packages here for, we've got two companies, some generators for our pump stations around the county. It's a process of, my membership has got three stationary systems and one portable generator.
Two portables and three stationary.
Okay. Genspring Power up on the mountain here, big package was $197,052.57. That was a Kohler-type system. Power Solutions in 1 Confederate Avenue was $198,952. That was a Kohler also. He did price a Generac. Generac didn't meet some of the specs that we looked at, but did price a Generac to that point. There's approximately $1,000, nearly $1,900 difference between Genspring and Power Solutions go in a contract. I'm going to make a recommendation that take the lowest bid. So that being said, Genspring's the lowest bid. I need a move in a second to approve that, please.
Sure.
Move in a second to take the lowest bid, which would be Genspring Bar at $197,052. And the majority of that money is federal money, Johnny?
70% of it's federal, 10% is state, and the rest of it's power in county.
Okay. And then the generator we'll be replacing down here at 911, but when we put the new one down there, that generator's going over to the animal shelter, correct?
Correct.
Okay. A larger generator going over there. All right. So that has been approved. Thank you. Now, item B, under that is the L-MIG road payment schedule for 2018. Well, I think Ms. Lisa had sent that to y'all here first of last week, to kind of look at it for the roads to be paid under the L-MIG program for next year. Wanted to get you ahead of the game on that, to the fact that, do you see any changes, additions, or anything to those roads list for next year? We are in the process of paving roads this year already. Now, this is L-MIG. This is strictly money from the state and a matching fund from the county.
You said the ones in red are the ones for sure.
Definitely. The ones in the red are ones that definitely have to be paved. The three other sheets are proposals to the fact that if you guys want to add or subtract a road in these three sheets, you can. And I can, we can mount real quick if you so like for the public here. The ones in red, of course, have got to be done next year, kind of condition usage. Lumber Company Road, Upper Grandview, Grandview Circle, Lower Grandview, Lake Shore Drive, Old Grandview, East South Bay, St. Army, Windy Ridge, Hickory Cove, Hyde Road, and Mockingbird Lane. Those are a must. The other roads that we'd like to pave on the L-MIG list that the individuals have got put together for is the Nally Drive, Pool Avenue, Solomon Avenue, Jones Avenue, Griffith Avenue, Ladier Avenue, Little Avenue, Wood Street, Spring Place Drive, Beth Avenue, White Oak Drive, Sweet Gum Circle, East Tolling Lane, Dogwood Trail, Red Oak Lane, Poplar Lane, West Tolling Lane, Charles Avenue, Winchester Ridge, Mossburg Trail, Hunter's Ridge, Lumber Lane, Redfield Way, Lower Browning Court, Ithaca Court, Blackhawk Court, Marugger Court, Savage Court, Springfield Court, which is ground right over on that one, Mouser Court, Smith and Weston Way, Martinway Springfield Plains, Fox Trail, Stevens Lane, Colt Court, Browning Way, Wetherby Trail, and Remington Lane. That comes up to a total, I think this is a material total only. Correct me if I'm wrong, Johnny. The red comes to $455,292.
Yes.
The first group of roads are red, it's $283,981, and then last was $333,953.
Yes, sir.
And that is L-MIG money from the state. So you have the ability. When do we need to turn this in? You remember?
It's due December 15th. We normally send it in in October.
Okay.
And have our response back by December, I give that, so then we know forward what we can go forward with.
Okay. So that's what we're, the ones in black are the ones that you've got to make that liberty. These years have to be done on that one. So do you need a vote to go ahead and approve this, or can we wait till next month to...
We can wait till next month. Whether that is this more. If you got any questions.
Next work session.
Yeah.
We've got a work session coming up. Let's discuss this at the next work session.
Okay.
Do I need to vote to just table this, or is that it? That's it? Okay. All right. We're down now to item number nine, under new business. Let's see here. My glasses are working here. Higgins County Extension 4-H Funding for Part-Time Assistant. This had come to Ms. Hardy. Rachel Whittington has asked for this, and is the money coming from where? From UGA or from us, or?
I believe part of that money was from UGA. It's a very nominal amount, and she has the money in her budget. The Board of Education is paying the portion of it, and the Board of Education will be funding 25% of it, and the Board of Commissioners should be 25%. And the rest is UGA.
As the, you wouldn't know if the Board of Education has approved their part of it? UGA has completed the contract for a part-time 4-H assistance. UGA has approved their part. Please see that, and also send to BOE their contract for the 25% provision. So I'm assuming the BOE has approved their part of that. I tell you how we can do this then, if y'all would like. If you were willing to approve that, under the condition that the BOE approves their part.
Sounds good.
All right. Kind of get a move in a second.
Sure.
Have a move in a second on that. Am I going too fast, please?
No.
Move in a second to that. All that in favor, any further discussion? None being all that favorite, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. That brings us down to item B. Capital lease for vehicles, Sheriff's Department. Ms. Fay, I know Donnie was, Sheriff Craig was in Atlanta picking up his son from the military to get him to the funeral home, so I know he wasn't able to be with us tonight. Would you be able to give us update on what they're, what they're...
And I believe the material in your packet.
Yes.
It shows the, this loss revenue. About a few weeks ago, the sheriff came to me and was discussing the possibility of doing another capital lease for 10 more vehicles. At the beginning of the 2014 squash, they did get a lease and bought 10 patrol vehicles, and they would like to buy 10 more. The chart that I showed you shows their average revenue per month on the slot from the squash and the anticipated collections through the end of the squash in June 2020. It will support the debt service on this capital lease. The amount that he wanted to make that quotes on is $250,000, and they get two quotes, one from BB&amp;T Governmental Financial, and their rate is at 2.22%. And I also received a quote from...
PNC?
PNC for the finance, yes. Their rate is 2.99, and the payments will be quarterly. I do not know what sort of vehicles. I think that when I asked Donnie that question, he said they were getting quotes on different types of vehicles and different brands of vehicles.
I see you got the amortization schedule.
This for vehicles and equipment.
You got the amortization schedule figured out for the 2.99 and 2.20?
Yes.
How long are these bids good for, are these...
The quote, this quote is good. The BB&amp;T quote, which is the lowest interest rate at 2.22, is good until August 14th.
So you don't really know which type of vehicles you want to buy. They just want to buy 10 vehicles, and they're going to be $450,000, so...
They're just estimating that the vehicle and equipment would be around $45,000. The ones that they bought, and I think there were 21 vehicles because they're purchasing in 2014, the equipment, they were slightly over $4,000.
SUVs, registered patrol cars at that time.
Those were explorers, I think they were SUVs.
Pay off for three years?
Yes.
And we're going to have the squash to separate the vehicles. So nothing out of the revenue budget.
No. And this will all be squashed, right? Just a suggestion, if you all would like to think about it more, or maybe talk to the sheriff about it, I think BB&amp;T would extend their date, release date. It's just about a week. In the meeting...
When's our next, when's our next county meeting? August 11th?
August the 3rd.
Really?
Work session.
No, that's a work session. Wednesday, Wednesday county meeting.
I think it's August 17th.
August 17th. You think we'd have the ability to...
I'm not sure that we can say that, because that dates until the 14th.
If they... We can call a special call meeting, long as we get it publicized at any time.
I was under the impression that the sheriff was going to try to speak to y'all.
He was, he got...
He did.
He did. He did.
But he was pulled out and threw away. So you feel like that we could postpone it, possibly the next meeting in BB&amp;T, would still honor what they're saying?
I can call them and find out if they would extend that date. If not, and you all decide that you want to do it, we could have a special call meeting. Doctor, I should be some of the stuff.
Let's, let's do that. I'm suggesting, I'm expecting you to, but your thumb back again. What's y'all's pleasure? Want to still call that? All right. All right. We have a, we have a resolution here appointing Brian Armour to the Board of Tax Assessors, position E. Mr. Armour is a, David Smith, who turned in his resignation, health-wise, I'm assuming David Smith has designed his term on Higgins County Board of Tax Assessor, effective immediately, whereas Brian Armour is eligible and has indicated his willingness to complete the term of Mr. Smith, I think, June 20th, 2017, beginning, I'm sorry, beginning July 20th of 2017. Brian Armour, to give you all a heads up, Smith Tool and Dial, west end of the county, that makes, they've got quite a few employees there. They make parts for Lockheed, some of the military, but they're making, they do make handguns, or no, I'm sorry, make long guns, am I correct, in like 1916, 1014s type scenario? Pretty good, pretty good business. So he was, he was willing to serve on the board of the tax, a tax assessor. So we, if y'all are willing to do that, then we need to get a move in a second to put him in the position to finish up the term of Mr. David Smith.
Is one of David Smith's stepsons?
That is, that is Mr. Smith's stepson. That is correct. They're both owners in that, in that business down there.
I know. Brian, he's a great guy.
Okay. So what is your all's pleasure on that one? All right. Have a move in a sec, move in a second to accept. Any further discussion? None being all that favorite, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Now we've got a item under new business. We've got that to item C, with text amendment, Chapter 34, Health and Sanitation. Pardon? Okay. All right. I'm sorry. Let me back up a second. We're going to go right now, we're going to go to item, item 10. A, in item 10, approving minutes for the regular board meeting on June 15, 2017. Y'all got a copy of that earlier that Ms. Lisa sent out. Need a move in a second to approve those meetings.
Sure.
Have a move in a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being all that favorite, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Those minutes have been approved. And as you recall, we postponed the last work session, so we don't have those minutes for that, or should we? All right. Item B, we have got a rezone request. All right. May 24, 2017, Miss Sturgis submitted an application to rezone the point, 57 acres of property located in 1562 Philadelphia Road, Jasper, Georgia. The current use limited for the property is highway business, and Mr. and Mrs. Sturgis would like to rezon the property to suburban residential SR. The intent is to enable the Sturgis to sell the property for residential use. The Sturgis has originally purchased the property to construct a building for their business, but subsequently purchased a pre-constructed building in the Higgins County Airport Business Park. Since they have a commercial location, they do not have a need for the property and would like to sell the property for residential use. The property located north and south of the proposed site is rural residential. Property located to the east and west of the property is agriculture, and the property located in the east and rural residential, the house... in the east and rural residential, the high and highway business, they should be. Land loot, land use intensity ordinance, chapter 67, dependent save, section 11, criteria considered on behalf of amendments. Number one, capability with adjacent uses of districts, the proposed residential SR land use intensity district may be suitable in light of the variety of existing uses and land use intensity districts of surrounding and nearby properties, two, property values of subject, property may have reasonable economic use under the current commercial HB land use intensity district. Uh, suitability, the proposed residential SR land use intensity district may be suitable for this property. Number four, vacancy and marketing information not readily available to staff. Five, evidence of need, the proposed application may promote the public health, safety, morality, and/or general welfare. Number six, public facilities impacts, the proposal may not result in a use causing excessive or burdensome use of existing street utilities, except, uh, except. Number seven, consistency and comfort, if the area is identified for suburban infield development and rezoning for residential is consistent. Uh, number eight, there is no other conditions. Staff recommendation, staff recommended that application for rezoning parcel be approved. The planning commission recommendation, planning commission members voted unanimously to recommend approval for rezoning parcel 030C dash 065 from highway business to SR. All that being said, what is your pleasure? Have a move in a second, any further discussion? Other than, that's right there, Donnell Road and Philadelphia Road, through the 80th Highway. Okay. All right, any further discussion other than that? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, now that brings us down to item C, under, under action items, under the text amendment, chapter 34, health and sanitation. And Mr. Osborne, you want to, thank you, you want to give a version of where you're going with that?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Planning and Development Department, the County Marshal's Office, and State Environmental Health have been working on complaints about unsanitary septic situations and the most appropriate method for enforcing violations. We met with a regional manager and our county manager for environmental health, and they have recommended that we adopt language in our code of ordinances that matches state language. And you've got that in front of you, it's a bunch of gobbledegoo, um, it's, it's something that State Environmental Health would be responsible for, and it would allow them to write citations to magistrate court for not installing or repairing failing septic systems. So Environmental Health recommends it, and Planning and Development and the County Marshal's Office recommends that this language be added to chapter 34, which is all about health and sanitation and on a code of ordinances.
Let me, let me, me and magistrate Judge Allen Winkin talked about that. What that would do would give, uh, the Public Health Department, which is state-operated, not county, it would give them the ability to find, uh, find individuals for either running their raw sewage out on top of the ground, or for a septic tank to be running raw sewage out of the field line, and give them the ability to enforce it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And whether it is directly through State Environmental Health or something that goes through the magistrate court, it, it's something where State Environmental Health folks have said that this language, which is state-approved language, needs to be in our local county code of ordinances so that the State Environmental Health folks can, um, you know, write the citations, um, have the authorization. Yes, sir.
Ray King, who is Christina Ferguson's supervisor, who they are in this building here, that represent public health, and then you have, of course, get your septic tank approval and all wells and all through them, uh, will be the ones that will have the ability to use citations. Now, if they need backup, we've got Mr. Harvey, the county marshal, and/or a deputy sheriff can do the same. Is that correct, Richard?
There's all different options, and, uh, right now, we're using some general county code language, talking about unsafe structures, unsanitary conditions, so, um, we can use that, but we want as much ammunition as we can, uh, in order for, whether it's the county marshal to pursue it, to pursue it through, um, you know, directly through magistrate court, or State Environmental Health to directly pursue it, but, yes, sir, this, this will be one more, you know, good bit of information that, that we can use regarding violations.
Okay. All right. That being said, do you need any more information on that? Mr. Barnes? All right, I need a move in a second to approve, if that's your wish.
Move in a second.
Move in a second to approve, any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, just a second, we'll go back to the first one. Now that brings us down to item D, Calhoun Water Agreement. As you know, we buy water, summer water from the city of Calhoun, and right now, we are paying a dollar sixty-two per thousand gallon and, uh, transporting it here in the Pickens County and taking it from there. That contract is, is in renegotiations. The minimum of that contract is 500,000 gallon a day. Uh, so what they have agreed to do on renewing the contract, uh, water, the water board has looked at it, water personnel have looked at it, and it's a very, very good contract. They're willing, uh, even though they get an increase on the kind, it's been, it's been a few, few years going back to '03 or '04, that this thing has been renegotiated, uh, at a hundred and six, at a dollar sixty-two per thousand, they want, uh, one, a dollar seventy-two per thousand, and then they want the, the, uh, minimum from 500,000 gallon date to down to 400,000 gallon date. And, uh, which is a very, I, in my opinion, it's a very good deal, buying water from, from a neighboring county. Because we buy, uh, water from them, we buy water from, uh, Carter, Cherokee County, and, uh, and hopefully we're building lines up towards, uh, up Yukon, and, uh, they will sell water or buy water from Gilman County.
Just curious, how much do we buy from them? Fifty percent?
Right now, no, right now, we're, we're buying on the average probably about, uh, anywhere from 3.60 to 4.10.
That's what we're losing.
Yeah, that's what we're losing. But we're paying for 500,000, I know, at a dollar, at a dollar sixty-two per thousand.
But what percent of our usage is that? Would you guesstimate?
I'd say probably about, about 62 to 70 percent.
It does sound like it's a good contract.
Now, the water we buy from Cherokee County, uh, under contracts that, that we've had with them for years and years, uh, is two, I don't want to do this, I think it's 247, and if we go over a certain limit, it goes up to 4, 4.62 per thousand, per thousand gallon. And that is finished water, that is water ready to hit the tap. So, that being said, uh, and what we're seeing there, I would like Phil, Mr. Landham here, to look over that contract, see if he sees any issues with it. If he doesn't, and he says it's, uh, it's okay to go, I would like to have the authority to go ahead and sign that contract, go ahead and get it started for the next, uh, next five to 10 years.
What does that mean?
The, uh, renewal on this one, I think is, I think at 10, this is here. We've got this line put together, I don't think we should plan that time, Renee and I had that time to fill it. What is it? Huh? When is the next renewal time on? Yeah, the other one, the other one had already expired, but they were, they were current, they were generous enough to not, to, oh, okay, okay. Page, go to page four of the contract. Terms of the contract, they have left that blank. So we'll get with, with Mr. Landham, and then we'll, we'll finish that up there, that's what it is. So I need a move in a second. Give us the authority, go ahead and through with the contract. Have a move in a second. Only thing I would recommend about, before I sign the contract, I want you two to look at it again before I, before I sign it. Do I need to do that? Is it back and forth? Can I do this?
I'll take it for you as long as, I think the only thing left is for that.
Yeah. I want you two to be comfortable with it before I finish off, so before we, before I sign it, then we'll give y'all a compliment, you go through it, see if you can do anything you might, I won't change before we go through it. So under those guidelines, I'd like to have a move in a second to go ahead and proceed with the contract. Have a move, got a second?
Thank you.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that gets us down to item number nine, under comments. Um, we're going to open up the floor to anyone sitting here, keep it to three minutes, please, per individual, if you will give your name, because Lisa, who is the county clerk, has to put the name on there, don't have to, if you don't want to, but it'd be nice for future, future reference. Anyway, anybody got any comments? Yes, ma'am?
Senator, I'd like to see me.
Sure.
Um, I'm Lita Kelly. I used to be a houseman and announcer. Uh, I did both the county ordinances there and did the ethics part of their, um, their ethics meeting, I guess you'd call it. But I wanted to listen to my audits, because sometimes it's going to be a very difficult job. But with that said, I'm here to talk about the pets in Pickens County. I'm concerned that they're not being taken care of the way that they should be taken care of at the shelter. And, I'm sorry, is your name Fay or Fay?
Fay.
Fay. Okay, thank you. When Fay was showing us what was under the budget, only, uh, they used 39 percent of the budget to date. That means they have 11 percent of their budget left, and they're saying they're understaffed. They're asking for food for kittens, they're asking for wet food. Why is this money not even spent? The hinges on the cages in the dock room are falling off. People are going in and they're seeing, right in the heart, they're seeing animals with feces that has not been cleaned out, it's been there for days. They're seeing empty marbles, they're seeing empty food bowls. In the dock room, they're seeing algae in the bottles. The staff says that they're understaffed, either they are. That's what I'm looking for. They're overwhelmed, are unqualified, but they need some guidance. If one person leaves and the shelter falls apart, this is not about the person, it's about the institution. I'm asking you, let's please take a good look at our shelter, and let's make some changes. Not only for the pets, but for our whole community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Ross, I'd like to follow up on that as well. I'd like to find out who's in charge of hiring the person, who's the director? I also want to find out what the job description is. The money is important, but does the person that we are putting in that position, do they have any background? Maddie's Fund actually gives you free, uh, training, do they have any idea about how to sanitize, not just clean, but sanitize? It looks like it may be a respiratory infection that's going around there, but we also have canine and feline flu. I know the canine flu has already been found at Wayside, um, so we have to have sanitation procedures in place. We can't depend on volunteers, those are great, but when people have jobs to do, they can't just say, okay, I'm going to work at the shelter. We need to have somebody, if we have money, to hire that has some experience to take over this. It, it just can't be anybody. Um, and when you're dealing with pets, you want to make sure they're as healthy as possible because they'll be adopted faster. Now, I don't know if the person that we're putting in that position has any ties to other facilities, if we can farm them out to somebody, say, in the north that actually doesn't have enough pets to adopt out, if we can move them out, rather than, you know, I heard when the shelter first opened, and I wasn't real thrilled with it, that the reason it didn't originally open on time was because we were waiting for an incinerator. Mr. Jones, you told me that was for paperwork, and I know that's not true. We are concerned about-
I-
That was a long time ago. Um, but the shelter, from what I'm seeing online now, the shelter conditions are really bad. I would not adopt a pet from the shelter right now because I don't know how it would affect the other animals I'm dealing with. People who are fostering, if we're taking them back and forth and people are fostering them at their, them at their house, then that could affect their own pets. So how, what is the job description? How does the person elected or nominated or put in this position get there? Is my question. And how can we fix the conditions that are in the shelter now?
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I've got a dog that was supposedly bit somebody. Going through procedure up here was not the protocol it was called to do it with. They did not show up on time to make the report, they did not show up on time to put my dog in, uh, isolation. They was called two weeks later, and I was told that, uh, my dog would be euthanized unless I got insurance on it, and the decision was made that my dog would be euthanized unless I got this insurance, you know? Now then, I'm trying to get the route around to get to somebody that can go into this and give me a clear view of what I've got to do to get that insurance took off my dog. Cause everything that they done, they didn't do it right. They didn't go by the written rules that was in there, you know? So I need to know somebody that can go down with me and show me what I've got to do to get this dog got back insurance, cause this insurance busted me dead, you know?
Yes, ma'am?
I'm going to follow up on that. After the dog was supposedly bit the person, a week later, he was shown a picture of the dog, and he said, I'm 100% sure, not the same kind of dog, not the right color. Well, when I called Christina at the health department, she immediately said to me, the decision's been made, we're not going to change it.
Really?
And so because of that, I had to pay a thousand dollars a year, if not for your letter, my dog will be euthanized. Annabelle, I mean, I don't mind keeping her up, she, she likes the air conditioner now. Um, I don't mind her staying in the fence, but I do not think, because you did not go and show a picture to the guy. I mean, I live on Raymount Road, the first mailbox he saw was 566, there's a quarter mile in either direction. The cops showed up and hung out with the dog for 45 minutes before I got home, no problem. Uh, my house is full of teenagers, no problem, but he said that dog did not bite him. And Raymount Road's full of roaming dogs, a gray pit bull, the one that he said bit him. So why can't I get someone to listen and take it off? I mean, it's coming up, do you, I've got a child going into college, a thousand dollars would be, be nice.
Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to know from the board, I moved here two years ago, and when we moved here, the biggest thing that impressed me about the animal shelter was how clean it was, how the, it was the happiest cat room I had ever seen in my life at any shelter. I've lived in Charleston, South Carolina, I've lived in Alabama, I've lived in Michigan, I've lived in California. I have never seen such deplorable conditions as it is now since Judy Moody has been born. You let those three guys see what's happening. And you know what, here, Paul, I feel about this, very honestly, the decision that shelter are not up to your personal opinions. You are a steward of the people of Pickens County, and right now, those animals are suffering because of your poor decisions. because of your poor decision. And I think the people who are here wanna hear from you, why? Why? Because you know what, it's not fair to those animals, or the animal lovers of this county.
This is after my wife had just spoken, she knows Judy a lot better than I do. I've been to the shelter a couple times, and when Judy was there, we had just lost one of our animals that was near and dear to our heart, and the day we went in, Judy took time with us to text each different room, and how clean it was, it was really, really unbelievable. And the biggest thing I noticed was how loved the pets were. The cat that we came home with, that, that Judy actually took us into the room to look at, I think he kinda chose us, but what that said to me is, how he chose us, was the love that that cat had gotten before we came in to take a look at it. Y'all understand what I'm saying? This cat actually reached out, and he put his hand through the, through the cage, to tap me on the shoulder and say, "Hey, Judy's taking care of me, I've been loved, now it's your turn to take care of me." And then a few months after that, Judy had actually called us to ask us to foster a kitten that had lost its mother and everything, and we well took that cat to our home, and that cat has a good home. So you're looking at one cat that had to be fostered to have a good home, and one that is with us to have a good home, and that wouldn't happen without that lady right there.
My name is Jennifer Martin. I've been a veterinary technician for fifteen years. In those fifteen years, I have worked in different counties. One such county, we did all of the euthanizations for that shelter. I spent a day, one day, eight hours euthanizing kittens between the ages of six to twelve weeks old. Worst state of my life, because when you work with animals, you want to save them, you don't want to kill them. I have seen some of the most deplorable conditions in animal shelters. And when I moved back to Pickens County, because I was raised here, when I decided to come back home, my best friend, Brandy, became in charge of the animal shelter. That's my best friend, I love her, but she had no experience in doing what she was doing. She had little to no support from Donnie Craig and the Sheriff's Department, to the point that she just couldn't handle it anymore. Moved to, the shelter is now moved back to the commissioners, and Judy Moody comes in. I don't know Judy. I've had maybe ten minutes of conversation with Judy a few weeks ago, when I went in and adopted a dog. But I went in, week after week, until I found the right dog, cause I, being a veterinary technician, you gotta have the right animal. So week after week, I was going, until we finally found the right dog. And I was so impressed, I have never, in my fifteen years, seen an animal shelter with so low of a kill rate. It was clean, you walk in there, it smells good, the animals are happy. Usually, when you go to an animal shelter, there are animals cowering in the corner, these animals were loved. And I've heard many complaints, that Judy would get rude with people. Here's what I have to say about that. When you work with animals, you see the best and the worst of people every day. And Judy will have a good day if it balances out. But I know for a fact, in an animal shelter, the bad always outweighs the good. So there have been many a times, when I've wanted to look at a client at a vet hospital and say, "Well, of course your cat has fleas, you had it thrown outside with no, no medicine on it." Yes, you are a bad pet owner. And if that hurts somebody's feelings, just because they have the right last name, and that matters more than the talent? Because those animals matter to more people, to that family that's not even here today to support your decision.
My name's Lori Taylor, and I'd just like to say that when you're, when you're running a shelter, it's not just some yahoo that comes in and takes a cat, puts it in a cage. There's networking, there's communication, there's knowing who to talk to, when to talk to 'em, fostering, calling the right people, knowing and networking, and having and doing, okay? It's a huge undertaking, it's not just some yahoo. And secondly, I would like to say that, I forgot what I was gonna say. Anyway, we can't just leave things the way they are, just, just, you know, toss, oh, I know. And, is there a way we could get another, a company, a third-party company to come in and do what we obviously don't wanna do? We don't wanna deal with German shepherds, we don't wanna deal with pit bulls. What are we gonna say now, next? You know, we don't wanna deal with people from Australia? We don't want a neighbor who's this or that? We are being bigoted, bigots, we are not taking care of our animals, we're taking, we're picking and choosing. Chihuahuas bite more people than a pit bull. Anything about animals? Obviously, you're an intelligent man, you know what you're doing, but you are out of your league with us people. You are out of league. Do you have a dog? Do you know what it takes to have animals, take care of animals? Or is it more important to have a drinking buddy that's happy? I mean, we gotta, we gotta get a ship together while we're here, and knit together, and make, make this place a better place. Thank you.
I just have a brief statement. I think the Pickens County Animal Shelter staff should be hired solely on merit, not relationships.
Amen.
And should be hired for cause, not relationships.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the commissioners, that we look at the animal shelter from an outside, step back from the emotional part, the business part, and everything, and get, set up a subcommittee or a group of citizens, contact University of Georgia. I think they have a pretty good veterinary program. Being from a family who had a sister taught twenty-two years at Auburn, UGA was our competition, but it's a good school. We've got a great four H extension agent in our county. I think we can lean on experts, and get some rules, regulations, behavioral traits of dogs are well-known and documented, so that you can make those determinations. It may be an increase in the budget, but if we need to hold an animal till a behavioral technician can come in and analyze that animal, that's reasonable. And then you have it, nobody has to go and buy insurance policy based on erroneous information. I think we just need to step back from it, set up a committee, and pull down some rules or regulations we can all live with, and are clear for every employee and every volunteer who's at that shelter.
My name is Sue Spear, and I hated cats. I've said that my whole life, I hated cats. I hated cats because my father hated cats. So I grew up hating cats, and one day, God put a cat on my doorstep, and my husband said, "Don't feed that cat." Well, I don't know what got into me, but I fed the cat, and the cat decided it wanted to live with us. That cat met an untimely death I will not go into. Then I would thought, it was kinda nice to have that cat, it was, you know, sweet, and cuddled with you. So I went up to the shelter, I've never even been in a shelter, and I met Judy Moody, and she said, "Let me take you to the kittens." She knew I was gonna cave at kittens. So we went back and saw the kittens. No bad smells, everybody was clean, they were either sleeping or fighting, the way kittens do, and I thought, ooh, a little too rambunctious for me, maybe? And she said, "No, and you really should take two." They need a playmate, they need someone to love with. So I called Tom, and I said, "I'm coming home with two kittens." And they slept together, I was very good parent because of her. I knew nothing about cats. She taught me how to grab 'em by the neck and shake 'em, which is a trick I wish I'd had with my kids, because they stop doing the bad thing. One of the cats hissed at me, she sent the cat for socialization training, to a home where at least it didn't hiss at me anymore, it still scratched me, so I wore electrical gloves for that. One day, the littlest of the kittens, which happened to be a grunt, from a woman who had litter after litter after litter, and refused to have her cat spayed. I took the cat to Dr. Chester's office, and he said to me, "I'm afraid we have to put the cat down, it has bowel instructions, and you'd be in here every month trying to scope that out." And if you love animals, you say, "I'm not gonna put this little kitten through that." So I went home, and tried to parent Barney as best I could, and every time I had a problem, I was on email with Judy. And she didn't have to do that on her own time, at ten o'clock at night, when I was free, she did. She told me, "Give 'em pumpkin to make 'em poop, put 'em outside, make sure they get sunlight, don't ever leave 'em alone, you're got, you have a new baby with you now." So I learned to parent from her, on her time, we weren't even friends, we just moved up here, so it wasn't like we had a relationship. She needs to be back in that shelter. You're not gonna find anybody to love those animals as good as she does.
Amen.
Any other? Yes ma'am?
My name is Tanya. I have been in animal rescue for more than two decades. I was in Cherokee County Humane Society when we had charge of the animal shelter. We would get the numbers and see three hundred to four hundred a month put down. I've been impressed with Pickens County's numbers, kill rate. Of course, you don't see that kinda numbers in a small town, they're normally higher, because people, they don't spay, they don't neuter. Well, over the years, we ran the shelter, we had a board of directors who inspected the shelter. I think that would be a good idea. They answer to the board of directors, directors come in, they have a checklist, it's random, you have to go in randomly, and see what's being done, and people answer to it. You don't do what you're supposed to do, you're out. You have a job to do. If you're there just for the job, do it. If you're there for the love of the animals, that is even better. We need somebody in that shelter, taking care of these animals, and whether you like animals or you don't like animals, while they're here, they need to be taken care of. Just like our children in foster care, they're put in a foster home, they're taken care of. Whether the person wants to take care of them or not, they are taken care of, and they have to answer to someone. We need a board of directors to go in and inspect the shelter randomly, and make people accountable. I don't know anything else that we can do, other than have somebody in there who wants to be there. The kill rate is impressive for a small county like this. And, you know, having people in there who love the animals is, when I've gone in, I've been impressed. The last two times I've gone in, Judy has not been there, she's not been employed there, I go in, I see the employees just sitting around chit-chatting. Okay, we have, we have cages with no water? Okay, well, let's put the employees over there in the corner, and tell them they can't have any water the rest of the day. See how they feel. And our commissioners are supposed to be representing us, and doing what we want as voters, and I don't feel that our voices are being heard. Our emails have been kicked back, because our commissioners don't wanna read our emails and hear our voices.
But that's your job.
Cause you don't want the truth.
To listen to your constituents, that's your job.
And that's, that's what we want, we want our voices heard and not ignored, we want our voices considered. We won't wanna be, okay, well, I'm here to do what I wanna do, and heppertish.
Again?
Again. This is fixable.
Sure.
We just have to fix it. How many in this room would be willing to be on the board? Raise your hand. So there you go, people who are volunteering to go on the board, I'm on a board, I know how much work it is, I would love to be on that board. And I like what you said about the randomness, you just go in and check. So what do you say? You're a reasonable group. I know y'all like, I read that you have animals. This is something we can fix, and I implore you to fix it, because we're not going away.
At all. It's gonna go higher, it's gonna get louder. I just, I just would like to ask the question, why are our emails being kicked back? Because I know the ones that I sent were kicked back, and, and I really would just like to have an explanation of why that decision was made, because if it was that Judy Moody was not needed, I think the weeks following, and the state of that shelter proves that Judy Moody is so very needed. Because what she did is amazing. This, it was not like the average shelter. So I would personally like an explanation from the three of you, as to why she is not needed. As a voting constituent, I would really like the answer to that question.
Out of respect to everybody in the room, does anybody else have any responses, or they don't, this is my first meeting, but I'd like to hear from the board, each one of you, not just one single person, what y'all heard here today? Cause a lot of people have spoken, and I think everybody's opinion's important, I think some of you have listened, I feel like some of you haven't. What did each one of you got to say?
Comment I will make is number one, I'm not gonna speak on the county employees. The, if an employee has been left in the county, it's, they have the right to go and get another job somewhere else, and it's not for me, and I cannot speak on a county employee and personal issues. On the other hand, the idea is that some of the group here has brought forward is worth looking at. I like the committee group, and I respond to that, and we will go forward. Other than the emails being kicked back, far as I know, my emails aren't being kicked back.
Mine was kicked back from your emails.
Well, I don't know why they didn't go through...
Actually, mine was kicked back from all three of y'all's emails.
It's, I don't know what's going on, on that part.
Well, then maybe your team back would be there.
Basically, as district commissioners, we are not, okay, I'm sorry, as district commissioners, we are not involved in day-to-day operations. As the commission chair, Rob is, you know, not throwing you in the list, but Rob's the one that deals with that, but it's good to hear from everybody, hear from the public, and, and, you know, it's a learning curve for us to learn all of this about the different departments, and I have been over, Judy can attest to that.
Yep, you're the only one.
I bring my grandchildren, and when they're in town, and was always, you know, pleased, but, you know, I've been a business owner, that was my past, and basically, we can't speak about an employee. I guess Mr. Landrum could, could agree with us on that, it's just legally and ethically, we just can't do that. But I appreciate the remarks.
I don't think anybody's asking to speak about employees, I think we're asking them to talk about, let's address what's going on at the shelter. This is, this has nothing to do with anyone up on there personally. There are problems that, very honestly, you can't ignore, and it's, and it's either gonna be voiced here, or it's gonna move up, and by moving up, it's gonna be Fox Five, it's gonna be the governor, it's gonna be higher, because you know what? You work for the people of Pickens County, and you, and you're not even having enough respect for the people in this room, to sit here and address the problems at the shelter. We're not, we're not asking you to say why you made your decision about Judy, we're talking about why can you not sit here and get over the bullheadedness of whatever is going on up there, and fix the situation? That's where, why everybody's here, fix the situation. We don't want you to talk about firing, fix the situation.
I mean, I'd be happy to go over there and, and look around, I just...
I want to, but we want to hear...
We've already told you what's going on. We just have been expected by the correct responses here, seven days ago, that Green Day marks on there, cause I followed up.
I'm sorry, was that a scheduled, was that a scheduled?
Yes.
Yeah, that was scheduled, it's not a random one, that is a scheduled.
Cheryl Ickoff too, from the States, that she just shows up when she shows up, a lot of times she works out there in the park. Mr. Barnes, you got anything you need to add?
So what you're suggesting is...
So what you're suggesting is that the group that you just put in out of thin air, or that were working there, that were so excited about their new job, these people have the connections, can network, can call people, know who to call, they're placing fosters, they're getting those animals out, and transports, there's a lot of things that have to do with that. Also, I understand there's a man who works there as the manager who really doesn't even want to be there. Why wasn't Judy put in that position? She was doing very well. One complaint about whether or not a cat, a cat owner was spoken to harshly when their cat was found in, up inside of a, of a car and not taken care of properly, is no grounds for dismissal, it just isn't. And, yeah, we have people who are not equipped to place these animals. You had something that was working, you were doing a good job, people saw that, people, in fact, people were copying that around, they're doing, you were doing it right. And then, because of personal reasons, you just kinda tear it all up? I mean, we can't, we can't think like that. Why aren't we offering Judy the management position? Why aren't we replacing the man that's over her and putting him where he'd rather be? And why? Why are we here discussing this tonight? Why wasn't it, why wasn't it done rationally prior? This is shameful, I'm embarrassed for all of you, and I respect that you've been there, but I hate that you don't know what's going on here, I hate, hate, hate it. And then there's sort of this little eye contact and smirking, which is disrespectful. I gotta say, I gotta say, you people really need to stand up and do what's right, you can make this better. And, and I'll tell you, the dog ban is sickening to anybody, anybody in this county.
Embarrassing.
And embarrassing and humiliating.
One more comment before we close it down? Yes ma'am.
I'm still, Linda Ross, I'm still back to my original point, I know you don't want to talk about hiring and firing, it's an at-will state, you can hire and fire at will. What are the qualifications, what is the job description, and how does the person get into those management positions of that shelter? I think, I think you can answer that, I mean, it's not individually based.
We have job descriptions out there, and if you want to email me, I will be glad to send you.
I think everyone in this room has. We all have.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for being here, you've already talked twice. Ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for being here, it is now 20 minutes till seven, y'all have a good weekend, thank you, y'all stay in touch.